I hope.
She's pretty hot.
But she does.
No, she does do that and she'll soon have to.
But she's like a mumble beast.
I didn't notice, I didn't. Where did the? Oh, okay. Okay, yeah.
Did you have?
Oh, no, I don't.
Russian Russian.
How you doing? Well, how you doing?
Oh, you meet.
Hey.
No, Thursday, Thursday. Not tonight.
I was beginning to feel like. Like service.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think on that mask.
Yeah.
Things.
I guess. As long as it's sun, that's all. I don't know anywhere you want.
Owen Fox.
Oh, yeah, you remind me that every time. Yeah, it's the kids.
Keep your wall. That helps.
Emma, you feeling better?
Oh, you got it? You still got it?
I'm stressed. I hope so.
Alan. Finally.
Did you spend the town?
Yes.
I appreciate it. I'll be there.
Oh, normally.
Okay. That night.
I'll just, that's what I was asking for.
Get him on. It's free. Not a Clemson. Okay. Wanted to be on the winning team.
Okay, now I see.
Oh, yeah.
Training meetings.
That's fine.
It's next Peggy.
That's right.
October four thirty.
Is Peggy coming?
Four thirty.
My son Jeremy was at that football game.
And we're gonna have our official picture on February twelfth, until at four forty-five.
I keep it there.
I heard.
Okay, that's what I will send out.
Okay.
I trust you. You'll make sure I have where I put these.
That's probably why. That's what he says. I don't understand all this mess.
Oh, I know, that's what they do. Oh, gosh.
It isn't. I was just looking at it.
There.
He goes.
I wanted to sign it down here.
Over in the bar. Those pants. And a big dude.
I don't normally do that.
I know it.
Sorry, but I'll pass.
Oh, okay. Oh, I mean. Yes.
I think our second game was like thirty-two.
Hi, um, um.
I mean. Beat them thirty-two.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, she comes back. Her house and pays. What am I? No, I love you. Signing man, he's my. What am I? From the funeral, yeah. Couple baskets.
You sign in, Heather?
Oh, no, I can't.
I am not. Listen.
It's five thirty. We're going to come to order for the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. We have a quorum, so we're ready to begin. First item on the agenda is approval of the December minutes.
So moved.
Second.
There's no discussion on the minutes. Please vote. Unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the January financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Johnson, second from Councilman Powell. There's no discussion. Please vote. Unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda, persons to appear. Are there any folks here to speak to us about the Community Redevelopment Agency? Seeing none, we're moving on to other business. Do we have any other business, Mr. Jorgensen?
No, ma'am.
There's no other business to be brought up by any council members then. We adjourn this meeting and we will reconvene at five forty-five for the city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if I could ask, we have pictures that will be taken this evening just in front of the seal, so if all the council would gather together there, Pamela Holt is gonna get some pictures to adorn the walls.
So. No, ma'am. No, ma'am, I need more time. I need more time to look at that.
February twelfth.
It's the thing. Okay. Okay. Um, I won't, I will not be able to look at that tonight. I will not have time. You could email it to me. I would like it emailed.
I'm good. What about you?
No, it's.
Okay, good.
That is not what that is.
Been working hard, huh?
Mr. Jorgensen, would you explain what this is?
Right.
Hi, Ed.
I'm not sure. I can't see.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Oh. Glad you can see that. My contacts aren't that good. Okay, we're good.
Me too.
Box evaporating from the system, yeah. Put that on there? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I know, and I know now they're thrown, don't come in the mail, right? They're back to being. Whatever works, like. All that. Or, you know, whatever, whatever works. Hey, Shari, how are you? Okay. Yeah. Because I mean, I've been. Will be buried. On your, but I have to buy him the paper. At the package, but, but. Every week. Oh, okay. But. I wrote for that. What? Kinda got out of the habit of wearing layer. I don't know. I, I'm, I did. There's very few, don't, I mean. This page. Ah, but. I just. After time. Good, because. Like I have. Is that, I mean. My house, absolutely. Got it. But. Same mailbox, same house. There's no, no second after. They are. My name. But I. Anyway, it's either, it's either name of the pen, David's name, address, or it's.
I should not forgot this time. I like this shirt. So it was my, my era this time. I, I, I've been running doing this.
Likes the paper. He wants to read.
And I just.
I would like to have a paper for me not to have. Buy him a paper.
And a letter, that's true. I like your shirt. We hanging in, that's, they hanging in there. That's right, that's right. Y'all got everything all.
They showed up, uh, Howard.
Parade and everything else.
Whatever. Hey, I'm the one who's eating Jeff Smith.
I guess like the food, the, see what my people was doing.
Your breath that bad?
And I had kinda called him back, but missing answer the check. Is it, the check split into the same. Check and the.
Halfway to bank.
And the other one. Better check.
There you go.
It's better like that.
Somebody can.
That's right.
They gonna be there?
Right, okay. Oh, oh, you know what I told you the other day about the call?
Be glad.
The call, I got a number, I told you the name. I got some good information.
Stop it.
Look here.
Right, stop it.
Final package.
Doesn't let me write either. My tongue is sharper.
Yeah, look here. Uh, any problem? Don't have a ten year wait before we come back. It's been, well. From, I'm up like last time.
Why?
Own, but. Had. Had to go tomorrow to get. I don't know.
That, um, that's, I have a lot of military.
Oh, no, no.
Oh.
Like.
Am I always, that happens.
No, it's not, but it felt like it had been.
Happy New Year. Drive back. Sure, four days? Yes, well, had some flurries, but not right in Providence. No, this, the drive was, no, in the drive was easy. I mean, it rained. Poor dogs. Oh, it's not a gigantic.
Actually. Um.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Who because it goes behind me?
Are you gonna? Okay. Oh, okay, so, oh, okay, so. Okay, okay. And so.
Oh, yeah, maybe. Going in the morning. Like for him to go, it gives him.
Oh, here we go, right here, Clubbers Park. Parks, Parks Flashback Project date.
Yeah, park, date. Got, like, odd, that, um, okay. I don't think, whatever it is in there. Or. Oh, there's.
Good. Marking.
I'm calling the meeting to order. City council meeting of January eighth, twenty nineteen. It's five forty-five and we have a quorum. We're going to begin with an invocation from David Rowan of Faith Baptist Church.
Hey.
Was he able to be with us? Mr. Bruton, would you be willing to give us an invocation?
Almighty merciful Father, we come before you to discuss the business of the city of Milton. May you direct us in the right way and do what's best for the city of Milton. These and other blessings, we ask in your almighty name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval for additional items. We have an additional item from staff.
No, ma'am. I take that back. There has been one distributed to council for their consideration.
Do you want to identify that for council or would you like me to?
River Rock Arts Festival and its approval.
And we can discuss this further when it comes up, but I ask that this be added to the agenda as well based on the circumstances. Are there any recommend, are there any additional items from council to add to the agenda?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have a comment. I meant to bring that information in the last meeting. Just gonna update everyone on Wynn Dixie is about to do a million dollar plus investment in renovations of their, of the Wynn Dixie in Milton, so that's a real big deal for all of us. I really appreciate them doing that, so just wanna let y'all know.
Yeah, that is exciting. I spoke to the manager about that too, and I'm going to follow up with the city manager as well about it, and the reason being that he suggested he may be able to provide some assistance to a nonprofit that might be supported by Wynn Dixie, so we're gonna explore that further. Thanks for bringing that up, Jeff. Is there anything else to suggest to add to the agenda? If not, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from December.
Uh, could I, motion for approval of the agenda? I believe we need to do that first.
Second. Motion from Councilman Powell, second from Councilwoman Johnson to approve the agenda as amended by Mr. Jorgensen. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Unanimously approved. Now let's move on to the minutes from the December meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Motion, motion from Councilman Snow, second by Councilman Powell. There's no discussion. Please vote. Unanimously approved. Moving on to recognition, special presentations and awards. I don't have anything on our agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Jorgensen?
No, ma'am.
I also don't see that we have a public hearing or special meeting for tonight or an invited speaker, and I've not been notified of any persons wishing to appear. So now we move to the general consent agenda on our agenda, which was forwarded from the executive committee meeting from last week, January second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman Powell, second. Now we will take up the consent agenda, assuming y'all vote. I think we've already voted to approve it, but if there's.
I'm not sure it requires.
I don't think it requires a vote. So taking up the cons, general consent agenda. First item is ordinances, resolutions and proclamations. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Resolution number fourteen fifty-five dash nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Milton, Florida, amending the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget, changing the estimated total revenues and expenditures of various funds and providing for an effective date. Changes in the budget are in the nature of adding outlays for the skate park, adjusting general fund contingencies, adding revenue for the cell tower antennas, and then capital outlays for right-of-way acquisition and sidewalk design.
Well, second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson and a second by Councilman Powell to approve resolution number fourteen fifty-five dash nineteen. There's no discussion. Please vote. Councilwoman Johnson.
Hit it twice.
It's waiting for your vote.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Unanimously approved. And we approve the general consent agenda, but the items might bear some additional discover, discussions. the items might bear some additional discover, discussions, so moving back to the general consent agenda, we have Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilwoman Peggy Smith, item ten seventy-one.
The, um, you have attached an, an itemized list of where we are with the, with the Splashpad project, and I understand that the only, um, little itch that we might have had was on an update on the removal, um, of a tree, and I've been informed that, um, our resident tree expert met with the city staff, and there will be no need to remove that, um, it'll be moved by the city staff and maintained by other people, so it's not going to have an impact on the design and, and expensive redo, or the loss of a major shade, which is a good thing. We need shade. For little sunburned people.
Madam Mayor, if I might, that was under Council Committee, Parks and Rec, item eleven fifty-eight, trees at Carpenter's Park. We do need to return, if I could, the consent agenda, and I would need the council to act on the consent agenda.
I beg your pardon, I thought they already did, okay?
Well.
We had a motion and a second, but there was never a vote taken for it. Correct.
We've had a motion and a second to approve the general consent agenda, please vote. Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
According to my paperwork, under general consent agenda items, the first item is the Parks and Recreation Committee, item ten seventy-one.
Yes, ma'am, we, we actually don't go through the general consent agenda, but once we've passed it, we move down to eleven fifty-eight, which was the trees for Carpenter's Park, so I think it's a similar agenda item, which is why it was kind of cross confusing there.
That's what I thought we were talking about, was the trees. So, I, I think the materials, uh, I'm sorry if they confused me, and I confused everyone else, so I apologize. So, at this point, we've approved the general consent agenda, we've already approved the minutes, we've approved the resolution number fourteen fifty-five dash nineteen, according to the order of items on the City Council meeting documentation, number twelve is next, City Attorney's Report. Do you have anything to report, sir? Yes, sir.
Briefly, Madam Mayor, there was an issue raised, um, I believe, last executive and then discussed, regarding a procurement of certain paving services in conjunction with existing competitive bid process that was conducted by Santa Rosa County. We reviewed that, um, and we are, we are satisfied that, under the existing board policy, uh, which we have reviewed, is in, is consistent with chapter twenty-eighty-seven, which provides for, uh, the quote-unquote, uh, piggyback effect, competitive bidding services. There is also provision in the code, uh, of Milton ordinances for authorization to appropriate city officers to, uh, work with other agencies in these types of financing and capital outlay projects, uh, which appears to also support the application of the policy at the executive level, uh, once that authorization is given. A, as a matter of comment, I would simply say that the, the existing authority on these piggyback arrangements travels under ordinances that provide for them, there's nothing, however, in the statute that says that an ordinance is necessary, uh, for that purpose, and it appears to be adequately captured by, authorization by council under the, under the existing ordinance for staff to do that, uh, by interlo, effectively in interlocal agreement with the county, which has been documented in email.
Thank you so much for looking into that and giving us that report. Is there anything further to share?
Not for me, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Don't believe council has any questions, so we'll move to the city clerk's report. Nothing to report from the city clerk. Now, we're moving to council committee items, which brings us to the specific item eleven fifty-eight, trees at Carpenter's Park, which I will return then to recognizing Councilwoman Smith to continue.
Okay, so, um, again, the good news is that the tree is not a major upheaval, it will be moved, it does not have to be removed and lost, so we maintain the shade, and it will be moved with sti, city staff and maintained by others, so we're all good on the plans that we have, there's no major alteration and no major expense involved. Yay for good news.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith, does that respond to the concerns you identified last week, Councilwoman Rice? Thank you. Any further discussion on item eleven fifty-eight? If not, we'll move on to the Public Works Committee, Councilman Jeff Snow, item eleven fifty.
Wastewater Treatment Plant, uh, committee appointments, create a commit, create a committee for the purpose of pursuing funding for the wastewater treatment plant, the mayor has indicated that establishing a committee of subject matter experts to pursue funding for the construction of the Santa Rosa Reclamation, is that what it was? S R R W R F is the, in, is the city's best interest. Participants would include our engineering firm, B D I, municipal finance consultants, county invitees, council participants, city staff and others. Recommendation, staff concurs with the recommendation, determine council interest, appoint participants. Want me to read their names, or?
Yes, sir, please.
Uh, Rick Delp, Buzz Eddie, Dan Heebler, board appointee, uh, Board of County Commissioner appointee, G D A Chair George Jordan, Kelly Alexander, Daryl Udrow, council and staff. Put that in the form of a motion.
Discussion, please.
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Rice.
I would like to add someone to that list for consideration, if we could, his name is Don McMahon, he is the owner of Pensacola Bay Oyster, and he does business, um, out in the bay, and he fills the commercial development and expansion component to this board, um, related to job growth, and I think that he's an asset on your board. And if it becomes a space issue, because I think it's so important for him to be there, I'd be willing to give up my place on that board.
Would you spell his name?
Don, D O N, McMahon, M C M A H O N, I've already contacted him to see if he would be interested, and he said he would be glad to help.
Okay, and where did you say he does business?
He is the owner of Pensacola Bay Oyster, and they actually operate in the bay, and the wastewater treatment plant is currently impacting his ability to expand his business.
Okay, well, I think that's a great suggestion, and this is not just my board, but, but ours, I mean, this is an effort that we are making as a city to make sure that we have the information that we can use to show our elected officials why this is so important, or, and the Triumph Board, too, wherever we can get funding for this project, we need, uh, all hands on deck to help us make sure that people understand how important this is and, and why we need the funding, so, appreciate that. And at this point, um, I, I have a motion and a second to approve this particular board, um, I, I think that what you're asking is to amend it, but I would like to suggest, too, that rather than, um, we, I think that we ought to make sure it's, it's, um, flexible enough that if we want to add other members, we can, I mean, does this have to be decided tonight, I guess is the question I have for the council, the members, that is.
I would think, Mayor, at this point, it's probably appropriate to appoint the committee by name as described, there is one footnote I'd like to make, and that is staff is staff, they're not appointed to the committee, they serve the committee, just a point of clarification.
And has each person on this list agreed to serve?
Each person that, um, we've invited has agreed to serve, that's correct.
So, this list includes individuals who have agreed to do so, and Mr. McMahon, by virtue of his communication with Miss, with Councilwoman Rice, has agreed as well?
I've looked at Mr. McMahon, that's another point of information, I think he would be a, a wonderful addition to the group, he has knowledge of environmental aspects of not only our plant, but other aspects of the tributaries and, and the river itself, along with the bay and its eschewery, um, I think he would be a good addition.
Great, are there any other comments or questions from council about this committee being, um, appointed tonight? Councilwoman Powell, I believe, has a concern?
Oh, it's not a concern, I just think that, um, nowhere in the language of this does it specify that we couldn't appoint or invite other members, so I don't think there would be anything blocking it from adding on if we need to, and, and, uh, I think maybe we could, maybe just amend that we would appoint the committee, amend the, the motion that we're appointing the committee and inviting members, so we're not limiting who we might invite.
I think the amendment to the motion has to include Mr. McMahon as well.
Yep.
Councilman Snow, did you have something to add?
I was gonna say the exact same thing.
Okay.
I will amend, uh, my original motion.
Thank you, sir, please do so. To add Mr. McMahon, as discussed, and to, um, I, I understand Councilman Snow is making a motion to approve the committee as stated, with the amendment of adding Mr. McMahon, as suggested by Councilwoman Rice, and further with the understanding that, as time goes on, if additional subject matter experts are identified who would provide, uh, useful expertise for us in this process, that council will revisit this committee and add additional members, did I fairly state the motion?
That's perfect.
That's perfect.
Councilman Snow's motion, as amended, has been stated, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Smith has seconded, if there's no further discussion, please vote. Unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is the mayor, Heather Lindsay's, as T P O representative report, we did have a meeting in December, as has already been discussed, there is not another meeting until February thirteenth, so that's the full report that I would provide at this time, as it's been previously discussed at our last meeting with Councilman Snow, who was present.
I'm sorry, ma'am, the fourteenth or the fifteenth?
The thirteenth of February?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Councilwoman Sharon Holly is our T D C representative, do you have anything to report tonight?
Um, no, Madam Mayor, my first meeting will be February the seventh.
Your first meeting's February seventh? Thank you. So, moving on to item fifteen, council reports, are there any council reports to share tonight? I believe Councilman Snow gave a report earlier, was there something you wanted to add?
Uh, no, that's it.
Anybody else have something to report?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, the S B D C, a small business group, has moved, uh, an office into Milton, and I have spoke with staff, I'm not sure how much, uh, council knows about the S B D C, I met with them at, uh, the B O C C meeting last month, and I think it would be a good idea for us to have, uh, Chris, uh, Chris Wilson, wanting to be the representative staff's office, have her come before us, talk with us, and let us know how their efforts have paled in with the city of Milton. I'd like to have her invited as a guest.
Okay, so you'd like to invite Chris Wilson to speak to council at the, at the next meeting?
Yeah, or our next, have her calendar allowed.
We'll make sure the invitation is extended, and that we, uh, determine an appropriate date based on her calendar.
So, thank you so much, so staff will coordinate that for us, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Jordan, is there any other comment or report from council? Moving on to the mayor's report, I am just excited about the information we've been given tonight, I haven't had an opportunity to fully study it, but, um, as you know, Liberty Partners provided us with a report, it's in our materials, and I, I continue to be excited about the positive reception we're receiving from our legislators about our request for help to get the funding we need for the wastewater treatment facility, and also to let you know, um, I believe it's being coordinated that Senator Broxton will be coming to see us next week, and we'll continue to talk about, um, that issue with him, and answer questions he may have, we, we have the folks that he wanted to attend ready to come? Great, thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. So, moving on to the city manager's report, Mr. Jorgensen?
Just two quick things, one, uh, obviously, I think I'm just calling to your attention again for Saturday, January twenty-sixth, eight thirty to eleven thirty at the Main Street Events Center, uh, we're gonna have a workshop, first hour and a half will satisfy fifty percent of the required ethics training for all local elected officials, and the other half will be on, uh, all municipal government in the state of Florida, under a charter similar to ours, Operate, so we'll spend three hours together that morning, if we can, and, uh, we'll look forward to that conversation. My additional item would be, as it relates to the wastewater treatment plant, uh, what I consider to be positive news, the permit fees which can lend themselves to that activity during the month of December, which is a holiday month, uh, most of, uh, the working world takes about a third of the month in, in recess, so to speak, uh, but in regard to those fees and permits, we generated in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, that's good as it relates to the plant.
Thank you, sir. So, we'll move on to other business, which on our agenda, we have eleven fifty-four and eleven fifty-five, and we're also going to discuss eleven fifty-nine, which is in other materials before you. So, beginning with eleven fifty-four, the Clayton White Business of the Quarter, we don't have one identified in our materials, do we?
We have some recommendations in your materials that, uh, that we've made, um, and you have a list of, uh, potentials, um, if council would like to choose from El Paso, Cozai's, the Bistro, Mason's or the Shack, I would add that, uh, the Bistro is celebrating its tenth anniversary as an operating entity in the downtown portion of this community this coming Saturday, um, I, I would take that into consideration if I were to.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, make Black, Blackwater Bistro the, uh, business of the quarter.
Second.
Discussion, please? Yes, and I'm sorry, I, I should have got this before the meeting, but what is the criteria to get on this list, how do people know how to get on this list, they get on the list?
We have criteria, I don't recall them off the top of my head, but they've been shared with the council in the past, that, uh, they, they include, uh, the aesthetic environment, the, uh, economic impact, the employment, the tenure of the business itself, amongst other items, but those are the four principal.
And then who submits for this list?
Well, this list is derived from, uh, code enforcement based upon, uh, their, uh, exposure to the businesses that are found in the community and their experience with those businesses, we then ask council to consider the factors I just identified and come forward with other names, if they have them.
Historically, we've recognized longstanding businesses, so the longer they've been in business successfully, the more likely they are to show up on the list, the Blackwater Bistro is the longest-standing business on this list, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's a great recommendation, and I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just, just a comment, uh, a, and I agree with you on the longstanding, uh, is it possible for us to maybe, and I'm just throwing an idea, to maybe have two businesses, one more recent, you know, maybe less than five, or, you know, three years, you know, that's making a major impact, uh, that we appreciate that, but we definitely have to appreciate our long-term business, so I'm just, something maybe we can throw out and talk about it to committee of the whole, something like that.
So, I hear Councilman Snow suggesting that at committee of the whole, we have further discussion on recognizing local businesses, may we do that?
You certainly can, we'll be happy to add the item to the agenda for Thursday of next week.
And, uh, if I may make a comment, I would just say that what we might consider is looking at maybe an adjacent-type program for new businesses, maybe, not necessarily to the scale that we do this one, but maybe, uh, some sort of recommendation for newer businesses.
I believe that's what Councilman Snow was alluding to.
Okay.
Or his position.
We'll discuss that further on January seventeenth. Coming back to the motion to honor a local business, Blackwater Bistro, I believe, uh, Councilman Snow made the motion and Councilman Powell seconded it, am I correct? Or did Councilwoman Johnson second it, thank you. So, the motion to identify Blackwater Bistro as the Clayton White Business of the Quarter has been made by Councilman Snow, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson, if discussion is concluded, please vote. Unanimously approved.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I'll see if we can arrange for the award to literally be presented on Saturday, just prior to their celebration.
I think that would be great.
That physically moving, physically going and moving it from point A to point B.
That's correct.
And you'll take care of all that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Do they have a start time for that?
I believe it's 2 o'clock. 2 o'clock at the Blackwater Bistro, they will begin their celebration, and that's wonderful that you can make that happen so quickly, thank you so much. The next item under other business is 1155, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust's second installment billing.
Question to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is in your materials, hopefully everyone's located it, do you have any discussion about it?
I'd just like the annotation, please pay.
Yes, ma'am, you can see that at the bottom, signed by Mr. Jorgensen, I believe, that's your, those are your initials, sir?
That's correct.
We can't go without that.
No, we can't.
We have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, please vote. Unanimously approved. Finally, I believe finally, we have other business, 1159, the Riverwalk Art Festival was brought to my attention this morning that they made an application back in July to be approved for the annual festival this year to be held March 2nd and 3rd of this year, 2019, as everyone knows, this has been held every year for many years, and there have been some logistical concerns that I believe are still being worked out, but I believe they are being worked out, and we have Stephen here to talk to us more if we need to have any questions answered. Are there any questions or discussion to be had before someone makes the motion to approve this event so that it can be held, because they need it approved tonight, they can actually get the advertising out? So, do I hear a motion to approve that this event may be held on March 2nd and 3rd, 2019?
A motion with a comment. If you need assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, I think I speak for everyone up here, a lot of us have been involved with this event for a long time, and you need some mountains moved, just ask.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith, I heard a motion from Councilwoman Holly, as well as from Councilwoman Smith, and I've heard a second from Councilwoman Johnson.
That's fine, I can take it on the end.
Okay. Any, if there's no further discussion? Yes, sir, Councilman Snow.
Have we, have they coordinated with Imogen, make sure there's a wedding, and I know we've had a couple of issues with their entrances being blocked off, and can we make sure that that runs smooth this time?
We have a meeting this Friday in regard to this event, and we'll be looking at the specific logistics and coordination during the course of that conversation, we'll address that concern.
Super, thank you.
If there's no further comment or question about approving that this event may occur on March 2nd, 3rd, 2019, please vote. Unanimously approved. Did we want to have any further discussion about logistics or your questions answered for now by Mr. Jorgensen's remark that he'll be having a meeting to make sure all that's ironed out, everyone's satisfied?
I think he understood what I was trying to state.
I think, you know, I think we all feel the same way, if there's someone who needs to have their hand held or help in some way, just reach out, this is a longstanding event and everything is surmountable, sometimes doesn't look like it, but we always pull it off.
Yes, ma'am. Seeing no other business before the council, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.
You're welcome, Randy.
...than others, and it pours, but...
We'll push the other three hours till next meeting.
Pray for no rain and...
I'll look forward to it.
No, I'll go fine.
Would you be part of the orientation on Randy Day?
I would like you to read it, if you want to use it as part of the orientation, it's fine. It's just something that I sat down and if I'm going to do a job, I need to know what the job is, and I sit down and out of my head and...
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey Jimmy, Happy New Year. Thank you. Well, it was pretty, I thought it was pretty, thank you.